I'm amazed at how much dust collects in the house. I just, because even through winter, I mean, the windows are closed. What?
Take a motion to go away.
Yeah.
And then we have our thing.
Right, right, right.
Dust under dust, I guess. One question I didn't ask is do our action...
Okay. Oh, that's...
I got it, I got it.
Okay. Your journey, your journey actually. Yeah.
Are we ready? All right. I call the city council special formal meeting to order for March 20th, for March 3rd, 2020. We're gonna, item number two is purchase of a, sale of real estate. Could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss?
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Salee?
Kia?
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, thank you. Item number two, purchase or sell of real estate. Could I get a motion to adjourn to the executive session to discuss the purchase or sell of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. The minutes and the tape recording of a session close on this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed.
So moved.
Second.
Move by ma'am, second by Salee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will be back.
Hi, Sue.
Good afternoon, Susan.
Hello, John.
Agenda for like this special, so take half a second.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it.
Thank you. Good catch.
So the, I think the idea of...
I, yes. That's why I said it was... I mean, it's all now, we're cast around, I mean, as we have to just about... We smell, we do that. Isn't that middle one, Mark, in church?
We've got some...
I think that's another thing we can talk about, do you know?
But that picture that Bill had describes... They also sell... Bill was pricing it at about...
That's good. That's good.
She's like, she does I D everything.
Yeah, we can do that, but they're still not working.
Basically, that kind of...
I was gonna say, you know, maybe that's... Too early. Everything's very poor. There's maybe a little bit more... There's maybe a little bit more, more function in this one.
I mean, I, I guess, how would we share? If that...
I'm just doing this.
I know. September.
I also see that there, that's like something that's...
I don't know how to do that. Particularly the road any time once it gets over four-four.
It's in there, there's a decent amount in there.
Seems like we need...
This stands out, there's that, even with the yellow...
Yeah, so we'll see, because I think we'll be able to justify... It's more than...
Well... We've got someone happy that he's...
I'm glad you said that. I don't know if you... It's always interesting, unless... It was somebody who was... Usually, usually want to leave. See, my hair...
We got some...
Because you have the, like,... Like, most characters just dancing all over the place. They get that?
They did not get that.
They didn't figure anything?
I think they did get the class with the rose. Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Just kidding.
So what do you, what do you think? We're still trying to figure out...
Her son worked, well, actually, her son, daughter-in-law worked there.
Well, they didn't...
They did.
They didn't know what song they was.
Yeah.
Right. So I can just see holes. But now, now the conditions are great. Disney, I want like, I want... Actually, I want them to be my guest. He's on, like... No, my son wants to go, like, Wyoming. My son wants to do more than go up to Colorado. That's not doing shit. How about you guys?
Florida. Eastern Florida. We put there a couple years ago. It's, uh... Three was flying. So it's... Worth.
It's expecting princesses. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
But it's a big holiday, so I don't know what they do. I mean, on the island, it's more interesting. Like, maybe they start working for the night. Maybe, but... You know, you don't decide on a different...
Two years, now I love it. In the water, she's really...
Right.
Carrie Parton. She was out about...
That's her...
Really, so she's... I thought her job, no. Just like she needs to be, like, she's up. She just... Shut her from my... She's...
It's just...
Through... Each... I was packing... I know, I'm expecting her. She's it too. But then, yeah. That was it. Now, you want to... So... I don't actually have friends. She took her three episodes out. My name is, um, just... I left all three ways away, but two, like, destroyed. This other one was just... The box was, like, the holder was destroyed, and it was like... And the work... I don't even know why or how. She doesn't... I said that all the people... She told me it was a certain reason that I said it.
You don't...
Yeah. I don't know. But they didn't, so... She's just... Was very good. Hi. I was even down, huh? She was like, trying to dig. They were talking about... No, I'm... It was okay. It's a resistance. She's like, you never get a dog. Like, no. You're like, oh, she has cancer. Okay. Cause she... So it's... I would, but I will be...
Right.
It's just... She... And then I said...
Usually, right?
Like the... It doesn't... I... We're probably saying... We have cats and... Cats, I think we are. I thought it was... No, it's just... I had a dog before, same time, and I grew up more. I think for us... I've always had cats. And then... And a dog, like, no, it's not on the...
Yeah. But all the other kids... Again, it's all...
The memories.
Right.
There probably is a one... I also think it's a three...
Our family was...
But wrong mystery doesn't... What? Yes. Yeah, I don't have a friend who's, but if I only like, can't skip three, you can't, but basically, she's like... She spent so much... Flams. Yeah, sort of cannabis. Good luck.
Talk about...
I was... Summer decades. I said, bye. Yeah, we don't like that. I don't know about...
Yeah.
What are you supposed to show? Sorry. Brother... Brother...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And his mom, like, yeah.
Time, I was thinking...
Sure. Like, the one part where he was coming around, he was coming around. Yeah. He's laughing. And then they hop on their own. Somehow they're ragged.
Really?
So they had a...
So... I'm sure he was shocked. Yeah. Be nice to him. Yeah. Cherokee's...
Those are really nice. Council, which has been...
Which, it was kind of heat. Soldering, so I mean, I don't care if you're... You're having good people, and she's saying, uh, just to get a little... As... They're next to her. She was...
Having a slobber. I don't get all the... Really getting a job. But again, that's... They were just... She needs right here. Yeah.
At least have dogs. Yes, you know, they're...
Oh, it's a reason.
Yes. And I took, I took stuff... I was like, we get back. Like, yellow lab now. She's doing that. Like, let's...
We do the... And so...
My cousin Julian.
That's... I don't know, so I think it's...
Oh, my God.
So, the W is two forty.
I mean, it starts to clear, but...
Four, four forty.
You have weight. Let's see, can they bank it? It's like you can... It's usually...
You want cheese in it? So...
I just couldn't make it out.
They have... We have a lot of air now, it's about the first time. So we gotta try to get out, like, you know, spread it, but it's like... Oh, I get, take you to the top of it. Which is, it's not, it wasn't... Or there's the worst... Like, fifty... I look like a different... A trans. No, we were right. Okay, so we...
So, oh, cool. Check it out. Yeah. Yeah. Get through your...
In the middle, all of it is, like, this is the sky. It's with the...
Like, a bomb slide? Oh, we should have, uh, yeah, I mean...
I'm ready.
This is...
Yeah.
Well, it'd be one proposal instead of three options. We'll see what that looks like.
But it was very... Old, very... That first, first... Then all the... There's three hours.
Work out some buzz over summer. We'll have to figure out when they can...
I personally think... So can we have, like, twenty, fifty, early sixty?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's kind of like a cancel, other things, because nobody takes me up until... I got this one.
Poor Jenny. Yeah.
And the room... Everyone's talking about... Um...
Hello. Is that right?
Oh, no, okay. I have been planning on that. I accidentally remember this morning. I know, I did. It wasn't on an island, so I forgot. I have...
I think it was one of these, which we had. We had a question.
The engine says, um, it's just... I'm trying to... It's like harder for us. Um... Just... Oh, and then we have... We have, we show that she owns a... Makes her spray three times. She rather... Except for... I thought it was always just... Yeah, they get to wander.
It's over five. I got a transformer. That's... Yeah, we talked about one back there.
Um, we're safe, I think. She's up, lost.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. That's what it's made for, just to... It's not right or down, it's... It's, yeah, exactly. I don't know if it's like, that's... Some... Some... Oh, yeah. 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 That we have... Yeah.
Share my...
Yeah.
Take you, right. So, uh, there's actually a... It's like... We're staying at Diszi...
Not the... Just give her out.
Yeah, so mine is down. Yeah, so you have to get tickets, so it's like...
I was looking at... Yeah. And that's... Yeah.
That was the price of the dog. Yeah. There's a whole round of...
Um... Still does have each one of them.
Yeah.
One board. I'm gonna... These tall boys get it. Yeah. Sorry.
So... Yeah. Always is quite large. Yeah. Sometimes, like, she... Don't hit.
These stations, yeah.
Still... Oh.
They try...
People use their classes.
Interesting. Good enough. Seriously.
Um...
I guess, well...
Yes. Strong. It's a lot. It's... Seven. Hey. She's a sheep. She's... I'm just... I don't think she's... Okay. So... Yeah.
It's like...
It's... So... I'm just... We're going to...
That's...
So, I'm just gonna judge it as... I'm not just... I'm just... So...
She's...
She's like... It's good. She's like... The same, like, house. He doesn't, he doesn't go. It, it's really good to say anything. So, I just... Show the guy, I'm sure.
Is that right? Right. Told you that.
I usually... I just...
No.
Like, I usually...
Oh. Five moves.
I'm just saying, I'm tired of that title.
Pretty much just written problems. We'll get back in the mood again. We got some... I think we can ask some problems. What you can...
It'll... Stay out.
So, we begin. Yeah. Articulation. Yeah. 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 Oh, really? It's all... That's literally, yeah, the whole way.
I apologize, someone like...
Trying to work out, I think, cold.
I tried.
And it was not the one.
Where... Should... Should not be... Yeah. Okay. So, to... Should... Should... Actually... So, I think... They're... I don't know. They're not... I think, yeah, I think... A lot of them, yeah. So, I think, yeah, I think... Uh, sure. It's not... Maybe, yeah. It's my... Okay. Does it come to... Well, I don't know. Maybe, which I started, sure, I do it first, and so she goes for final sound. So, definitely, I'm just... So... Gosh, it's stretching, yes, and she's... Gradually, she's doing this long. It's like, it's like, it's like... Yeah, actually, it's... Or taking after this, I try. Years is forever. She... Yeah. 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 I don't know why they don't... Do you want to say that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That's so terrible.
Yeah. I want to be, yeah. That's it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I should put that. Yeah, put that.
So, it's... But, uh, it's like, we can spend our... It was my... I'm just...
Yeah.
Also, I'm surprised, because I'm... As long as it's a year, so probably, I expect it's...
And it's on...
I don't follow this record, and it turns a little... It's two years, right?
Are you in it?
I think I'm saying, you know, I'm still in that, it's true.
Um, I think, I don't, it don't seem to be... It's a good... Yeah. Can't work.
It's like... Hey, great. I should just... I'm just... Education, yes. I'll teach it. So, which, right, she's driving, she has... I have... Rich, so there's schools, very...
So for the, those of you who are joining us, we just adjourned, um, what, we just had an executive session. And so, item number three, could I get a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms.
Okay.
Seconded by Celeste, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. We are going to go into our work session for Tuesday, March third, twenty twenty, here at City Hall. And the first item is Historic Preservation Year in Review. Hello?
Hi. I'm Jessica Bristow, I'm the Historic Preservation Planner. And, um, thank you for your time. I'm here to go through our annual report that we submit to the state for the activities of our Historic Preservation Commission for the calendar year of twenty nineteen. They do have us report everything on a calendar year instead of a fiscal year, just so you're aware. I'll just provide you with a little bit of background, um, just generally. The National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six established a nationwide program basically to encourage preservation and the wise use of, use of historic resources. This act also established the National Register of Historic Places where properties or neighborhoods could be listed as historic resources. It also established the State Historic Preservation Office. Finally, in nineteen eighty, an amendment to that act created the Certified Local Government Program, of which we participate. This program encourages historic preservation at the local level. It also encourages local governments like ours to use the Secretary of, Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. These are good practices, acts, suggestions, guidelines for professional qualifications as well. The Certified Local Government Program also provides technical assistance through the State Historic Preservation Office. It, uh, we call it SHIPO. And, uh, they also provide funding opportunities for historic preservation activities. We have always done an annual report. They've changed the reporting procedures so that is, it is more digital. And part of that requirement is that we present to council. In the past, we have provided you with a, a, a document that was our report. So that's what has changed. In Iowa City, we have, um, a large quantity of properties that are regulated. We have eight historic districts. They comprise six hundred and eighty-nine properties. In Iowa City, we have these, um, districts that are locally designated, but they are also all listed on the National Register of Historic Places in some form or another. Sometimes they're combined or, or separated out. We also have a local designation for a local conservation district. These are not association, associated in any way with the National Register. These have eight hundred and six total properties. And we also have fifty-nine individual local landmarks. Some of these, about forty-five of them, are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. There are also in Iowa City, some individual buildings that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places that are not local landmarks, just to make that distinction. This map, just so you're aware, shows a little bit of an overlay of those historic districts and conservation districts and all the red dots are the local landmarks. Some general information that we include as part of the report, this information is all towards the end of the report. We have a commission of twelve individuals. Two seats are open. They tend to be, uh, small districts that are, are hard to get commissioners to represent them. Uh, we had thirteen Historic Preservation Commission meetings this year, eleven regular meetings and two special meetings that we called, uh, at the request of owners of properties. Uh, we work with a budget of about forty-four thousand, two hundred dollars plus an owner, a property owner incentive that we have. The budget is worked out to the mailing that we do annually to property owners to let them know about our work. Also some travel and training funding. Miscellaneous consultations would be if we needed to hire someone to, uh, research something for us and then our staff cost. Our Historic Preservation Fund, I'll talk about a little bit more, but, um, later on, it's forty thousand dollars. One of the activities that we do, uh, as a commission, as part of this Certified Local Government, um, program, is that we locate historic properties, we evaluate them, and, uh, we do some registration activity, which means, uh, working on nominating them to the National Register of Historic Places. This year, we did, uh, three projects that were called an intensive survey. That's where we investigate that property and its history, um, really in detail to discover whether or not it would be eligible for the National Register and therefore also possibly eligible for, uh, local landmarking. Uh, one of them was the property at twenty forty Waterfront Drive, which you see a photo of right there, the house. It was built in eighteen fifty-five through eighteen sixty-eight. We had a grant from this program in order to do that intensive survey. Uh, we also investigated both two twenty-five North Gilbert and two twenty-nine North Gilbert at the re, request of council to see if they could be local landmarks. And, uh, we completed that survey and, and did do that process for those two houses. Uh, also along the lines of identification and, and evaluation, um, another grant we received from the Certified Local Government Program was the National Register nomination for the Clinton Street and Railroad Depot Historic District. This is the district that runs along Clinton Street for about a block and a half, just north of the railroad tracks and the depot. I have a, a map of it on the last slide, just so you're aware. But, um, the National Park Service did determine that this, uh, district would be eligible for listing in the National Register. Because of owner objection, they just sent us that determination and it won't be listed unless, um, the owners, um, remove their objection. We did two projects that were, um, kind of an evaluation of structures. We had the, the Sang Se Gilmore House at one oh nine Market. We hired a consultant in order to look at that property structurally and evaluate the possible relocation of that property. We also, uh, got a, a grant from the Certified Local Government Program to evaluate the Summit Street Monument. That's, uh, the monument, monument that forms the, um, southeast corner of the original plat of Iowa City. It's located at the corner of Summit and Court Street and it's deteriorated enough that we needed to look at, at how it's deteriorating and what are the possibilities that we could do to, um, help with that structure. The state also, uh, has us, um, report to them back anything that we do locally for our designation process as well. And we did have five properties that became local landmarks this year. Uh, three of those were already listed on the National Register of Historic Places and were city-owned. And so we, uh, locally designated them, uh, just to make that a little bit more clear to the public and to provide a good example. They include the City Park cabins, the Senior Center, the original Iowa City Post Office, or old post office, and the Ned Ashton House. And then, of course, the, the houses at two twenty-five and two twenty-nine North Gilbert also became local landmarks. When the commission is working on, on actually protecting and preserving and managing the historic resources, a lot of that has to do with the technical assistance that they provide. Commission and staff both work on preservation projects. We like, uh, for applicants or property owners to come to us early in the process so we can work through, um, what might be the most appropriate actions to take on their, uh, particular project. Uh, we provide resources on property history, uh, contractors who might specialize in, um, tasks that it's difficult to find contractors to do, um, materials that might be historic materials or, um, new materials that they might be able to use. We provide direction or options on project design if they need help interpreting the guidelines or if they just need help figuring out the, the best move to make on their project. And then we review applications and suggest modifications if needed. I included a little bit of our review data here. We get calls and inquiries about properties. Some of these become applications that we then review formally. Some of them are just inquiries. Somebody wants to know something about a house or what all of the possibilities might be in a property. This year, we had a hundred and ninety-eight inquiries. Uh, last year, we had a hundred and sixty, and this has been increasing significantly each year. The increase, uh, in twenty nineteen over twenty eighteen was twenty-four percent. Uh, we also had a ninety-eight applications for historic review. That's everything from an addition or maybe even a demolition to the need to repair something and issuing a certificate of no material effect. Uh, our Historic Preservation Fund, which was a new thing we implemented in twenty seventeen, we haven't really reported yet about. So this is kind of a new, new reporting and, and, um, what we show here is over the, all of the time that since we've had this fund, we had, have had the, um, twenty projects that you see, one from twenty seventeen, eleven from twenty eighteen, and then in this reporting year, eight of them. Our project types tend to be repairs, replacement of deteriorated things, rebuilding something that's missing. And it was interesting for us to look at what districts those projects came from. And that's what the pie chart is showing you, that of those twenty, three of them came from College Green, six of them from Longfellow. That was just something that, that we found kind of interesting there. Uh, the way the fund works is that an eligible property, a property owner can have work done where they would then be reimbursed for fifty percent of the project costs through a loan or a grant from the city. They pay the other fifty percent. It's a grant if they're below an income, uh, level or if, well, and if they also own and live in that property. If it is an income property or above the income level, it is a loan. Uh, we also are involved in public education. Uh, one of our biggest events is the Historic Preservation Awards, and that's the one I'll highlight here. Um, the awards for twenty eighteen was done last January. We had nineteen awards for properties and individuals. Some of the categories are paint and exterior finishes, different levels of rehabilitation, new construction, addition, stewardship for long-term, uh, care of a home and, uh, other, um, projects such as that. And I also wanted to point out that our, uh, award ceremony for twenty nineteen will be this May seventh at five thirty PM at the library. Uh, we start with little refreshments at five o'clock and it is one hour and no longer than that. One of our, our big projects that we've been working on for, uh, a while now, actually, was a civil rights grant that we got through the National Park Service. This project was completed in twenty nineteen. We successfully nominated and had, uh, listed in the National Register of Historic Places the Tate Arms at nine fourteen South Dubuque Street and the Iowa Federation Home for Colored Girls at nine forty-two Iowa Avenue. Uh, part of the grant from the National Park Service also was involved with putting signage at the location. Um, it's, it's always good to do that if you can because that, that house really, uh, represents that history in a visual way, especially if you can read about it while you're there on site. We created a city webpage that provides more information and some other sources for information if people want to look into it further. And it's continuing to allow us to provide public education through, um, talks and other things such as that. The, uh, annual report also, uh, includes a section on both challenges and successes. And so, uh, we report those as well. And some of the commission challenges that we've had over, um, the past year were the, the house at, uh, one oh nine Market, the Sang Se Gilmore House, that its, uh, future is a little bit uncertain. Um, we have our National Register Historic District for downtown. A consultant is currently writing that nomination and it'll move through the process and, um, hopefully, um, be reviewed by the National Park Service towards the end of the year. But we had one of the houses, or one of the buildings that would have been a contributing structure in that historic district that was just recently taken down. And, and so that's, uh, another hard thing that when you're moving forward on a, a historic district and, and those resources might change or, or no longer exist. And then we also have the, the, uh, commission has a priority for increased staff time, not only to continue with their priorities and work plan, but, um, to keep up with the current caseload. The commission successes, uh, we've really had a, a good rollout over the last couple of years with the Historic Preservation Fund. We've used it a lot to keep, uh, windows in good repair and out of the landfill, to replace porches that no longer exist, to, uh, repair and replace roofing materials that are a little bit more unusual. And, uh, the public seems to like the fact that, uh, while we have guidelines, we also can help with some funding as well when some of those projects come up. Um, the, uh, National Register, letting us know that that district that you see here in this map now is eligible for the National Register was also something that we really were looking forward to and, uh, that was a good success. Um, we had, uh, a long time wanted to have those city-owned properties listed locally as well as on the National Register. So that was also a big success for us. And, uh, continuing the, the work that we did with the civil rights grant is also something that we consider a, a big success. So, that's all I have.
Any questions or comments?
You, you'd mentioned that you were looking for additional staff time. What, uh, what, what did you, do you have and what are you looking for, just out of curiosity?
Uh, staff is currently at, uh, halftime, uh, twenty hours. And, um, uh, I, I think that the commission has talked about, uh, logically, an, an additional ten hours to three-quarter staff time would, um, help with the current caseload and, and projects. If we move forward with a, a larger area or a, another historic district or something like that, it, it's feasible that, uh, full-time staff might be what would be necessary, especially if we ever did do anything with a downtown district or anything like that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. All right, I think our next presenter is not here yet, or.
Captain Brotherton's gonna come up and give you a quick introduction.
All right. So we're moving on to the Police Department Outreach Update.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Denise Brotherton with the Police Department. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our Community Outreach Division and some of our current community outreach efforts. And I do have a couple guests here with me that will step up here.
Yeah, we see them.
We see them. Sometimes dogs are a little bit like children. Luke? So, uh, hopefully everyone's comfortable with dogs. He's well-trained. Um, first of all, just a little bit about our Community Outreach Division. Uh, right now, it consists of three officers, our employees. We have a Community Outreach Assistant, which is Daisy Torres, which is right here. Our Community Relations Officer with is Travis Neill. And then we have our Neighborhood Response Officer, Adam Schmierbach, who unfortunately is at some training this week. Um, we, over the past year, we've kind of changed up our Community Outreach Division. Uh, wanted to breathe some new life into it, get a little more into the community, which is the whole goal of that division. One thing we've done is we've moved into the rec center, the Lee Rec Center. That's been a great place for us to be. It allows, um, these guys are both work out of that office. It allows them to have just the interaction with staff, the public that comes in there. We've made sure to not be a security force, but just to be there to interact, to help with some programming, have that open office, especially for the kids, just to come in. It's been great to have Luke around there too, um, to get everyone used to him. Um, some other things we've done with our Community Outreach Assistant, I'm sure most of you are familiar with our previous outreach, outreach assistant, which was Henry Harper. Uh, he left us last spring. He left us last spring, and this past fall, we've brought Daisy on board. Some of the things we wanted to do with her position is, previously, our Community Outreach Assistant was very involved in just youth-centered activities, which of course remains a priority for us. But as we reevaluated that division, we noticed we're missing a lot of segments of our community that we need to reach out to, that we need to build better relationships with. Part of what Daisy does now is to build some of those bridges, reach out, find out from those community members what we can do for them, what programming can we do for them, instead of us deciding what they need. She's gotten some great feedback. She'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Another thing we changed is having the K-9 officer. Usually, our K-9 officers have always just been patrol-based, and just enforcement efforts. We decided Travis was ready for a change in his career, and was very active in the community to begin with. We decided to bring him on board, and bring Luke on board, and it's just been a great addition. People are getting familiar with our program, and we're able to use the K-9 in a different way than just enforcement, which is kind of like how we want to use our officers, too. It's just not about enforcement. And it helps, again, with those youth activities, because not only do adults like them, the kids love them. So Travis has continued to go to the schools. He does lunches at the elementaries. The kids just love it, they earn that, and he'll be back up here. You can ask him some questions about that program. Some of the things we have going on right now, as far as our community outreach efforts, is this is an exciting time for us, as the weather gets warmer, it gets us out there, it gets our officers out there on foot patrols, out on their bikes. It's just, you know, it's Iowa when it's winter. They don't want to get out in the cold any more than anyone else. People aren't out in their neighborhoods anyway, but once people start, they're out, they're barbecuing, they're hanging out in their yards, the kids are out. We try to push those officers, get out there, walk. It's just not about enforcement. Walk around those neighborhoods, just talk to people, the same with the bike officers. We'll join in on some of the already events that go on, like the parties in the park, Juneteenth, Kites for Kids, that will be coming up in April. We like to join in on a lot of those. That's another thing that Daisy does, is she looks out for those community efforts, or events that are going on, and making sure that the officers are aware of those, so that we can join in. Another thing that Daisy does is she's upped a lot of our social media, a lot more. We're seeing much more on Twitter, on our Facebook. I think if you look at our Twitter right now, you'll see Officer Sandofer doing a TikTok video from the Soul Food Dinner the other night. And so just getting a lot of that positive out there, and she makes sure to get pictures of the officers out at those events. I'm sure you guys have seen our Project Blue Able, the listening posts they've had for those. They'll talk a little bit more about that program. We do have the Citizens Police Academy going on right now. That started in January. That will continue for 10 weeks, that's on Monday evenings. Right now, we have 34 students in that class. On April 11th, at 3:00 PM at Mercer, there's going to be a community awareness on public safety for immigrants and refugees. Another part of our community that Daisy's really zoned in on is, how do we reach refugee and immigrant communities who are often afraid of us, not familiar with us, much time from just their own experiences back in their home countries, and what we can do to make them familiar with us and some of our laws, so it's not so confusing. Daisy has also partnered with the Senior Center and the Johnson County Emergency Management to present Fighting Fraud classes for seniors. Those started up in February, and they occurred every Friday at 10:00 AM, and those will begin again in April. And again, just those continual, the lunches we do at the schools, the visits of presentations. We have opened up to make it a little easier for people to reach the office by having one email, which is communityrelations@iowa-city.org, so people can email right into the whole group and say, "I have this event," or "Can you come speak to us?" And these guys can amongst themselves decide which officer would be best to respond to that. So I'm gonna turn this over real quick, and have Daisy introduce herself, have Travis introduce himself, and then certainly we'll take any questions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've never spoken into this before. My name is Daisy Torres, as Captain Brotherton introduced me. I am a recent graduate at the University of Iowa. I graduated last May. I majored in criminology, and I minored in political science. I had a lot of community engagement opportunities as an undergrad, which is what kind of gravitated me towards this job. My sorority, Sigma Lambda Gamma, is historically Latina-based, but we are now a multicultural membership. We are part of the Multicultural Greek Council, which our sorority actually helped establish at the University of Iowa. It was the first one. And getting exposed to all these different communities has always been a really big part. My family came from Mexico, and I was the first one born here in America, so I was the first one to go through a lot of things, college being one of them. And knowing that sometimes there isn't always support for students like me, first generation, made it a goal for me to make sure that they don't have to, whatever type of first generation they are, support them in whatever way we can, because they're important to our communities, and making sure that we take steps to make sure they're comfortable, and they know they're appreciated and understand, because it's very important to them, because it's, when you're new, it's, everything's really scary. So that's something I've tried to accomplish with this position, is making sure that our folks that are new to not just America, but also our community, know that they're valued, and we want them to have any sort of opportunities for getting to know us, because we're there for help, and we shouldn't be there just for crisis. We can also be their friends. Yes, and now we listen to Travis.
I promise I'll be brief. I'm Travis Neal, the police officer in Iowa City for 11 years. I have a communications associate's degree and a bachelor's in criminal justice. I've had Luke since 2014. Luke is a dual-purpose German Shepherd. He does lots of different jobs for the police department. He's been, we've had a very storied career, a very successful career. I'm very proud of what we've done, both on patrol and also in our community outreach ability. Luke is a little unique for police dogs. They're not generally this social, so it would be, we'd be remiss not to take advantage of the fact that he is such a chill, relaxed, social dog. And I've had great success, here, great success with, yeah, we just talked to Brad about what's in that bottle. I'd be remiss if we weren't utilizing his, some of his different talents than what your typical, hey, well, your typical police dog has. So, I've enjoyed my time there. Again, I just started in January getting into this position, getting my feet wet. I've had a great time learning. I've had a great time meeting different people, different organizations, different groups throughout the community. I'm looking forward to what the next two and a half years have to come with. It's been a pleasure so far, and I'm eager to answer any questions that you may have.
One thing I'd like to point out about Daisy, if you remember, Henry was more in a uniform, much like ours, a little softer. Once Daisy joined us, she pointed out she felt that people would feel more comfortable if she was dressed down, but still, some would be recognized for the city. So as you see, she has the polo, she wears a different, she's got like a blouse that she also wears that identifies, but she has found and has gotten positive feedback when she has spoken with groups, it just makes them feel more comfortable. And then as she kind of gets some of those relationships built, or programs started, that's when she'll start bringing us in, in our uniforms, because we eventually want people to feel comfortable with our uniform, but we understand, and especially having Daisy point that out to us, it's like, it's not that comfortable for everybody. We miss that, we wear this stuff all the time. So, that's why you'll see she's dressed a little differently than Henry was, but it's worked out very well. And we're open for any questions about any of the events, or these two, if you like.
I've seen Daisy quite a bit in the community, and what I will say is that I believe that you've been received really well by those, so good job at just getting out there. I know it's a little uncomfortable at times, putting yourself out there and engaging with people, but you've done a great job. So just keep it up. And I think for a lot of individuals that are maybe of, you know, a certain ethnicity that haven't had such positive reactions, I think you're helping with that, just that communication about, you know, how it doesn't have to be that way or feel that way, and so appreciate that. And then Travis, I know that your friend is here today, big boy.
He gets called fluffy sometimes. I'm sure one of us is in really good shape.
Yes, yes. Well, I applaud you for the Project Blue Able. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So Project Blue Able came about very organically, in a meeting that Daisy set up with Access to Independence. As part of my initial training and initiative in coming into this new position, she set up a meeting with Access to Independence. We just met him at a staff meeting, sat down, very organic conversation came up, we were discussing this. And Daisy and I had received an email two or three weeks prior to, from Captain Brotherton, and it was an article about an initiative that the Chief of Police Association in Connecticut had put out called the Blue Envelope Program. And the Blue Envelope Program was a play on their green envelope from 15 years prior. So Connecticut found out from their research that they had an issue with deaf and impaired hearing drivers, and interactions with law enforcement. It can cause a litany of different sigmas, trying to pull a vehicle over, they don't see the lights, and they don't hear the siren. Well, I can tell you, as a police officer, if I'm trying to pull someone over and they don't see my lights, and I have to hit my siren, that inherently raises the anxiety or the caution in me, and it can raise the level a little bit. So having something as visible and easily identifiable as a large green envelope for the person to, once they recognize, oh, I'm being pulled over, and they stop, and not having that ability to communicate, being able to hold that envelope out the window, it signified to the officer, oh, hey, they just didn't, they can't hear. So they didn't see my lights, that's what took so long. And it lowered that level of anxiety, and it provided better service to not only the citizens, but also to the police officers. It provides some context, and some much-needed information immediately, which was super successful. So, fast forward to two years ago, Connecticut found out, hey, we have an autistic community that's driving, and the autistic community is being pulled over, and there's having some adverse reactions with law enforcement. So they came out with Project Blue Envelope, and the Blue Envelope was for autistic drivers. Huge success. In doing research with it, talked to Connecticut, they said, this is bar none, the best project we've ever put out, from a community relations standpoint, and from an officer safety, and just a community outreach point of view. Everyone had rave reviews about it. It was a huge success, and it's something that they said, that's, of all the years we've done this for 15-plus years, that is single-handedly the best project we've ever done. So in meeting with Access to Independence, we're talking about this, we're discussing different things, that popped into my head as we're sitting there talking. I turned to Daisy, and I'm like, you know, this sounds a lot like the kind of group that would be interested in like that Blue Envelope Program. They would be able to help us find out how much of a need does Iowa City have for the blue envelopes, perhaps? Well, and in asking about autistic drivers, Access to Independence, Sarah was like, I love that, that's great, but what about, and then she lames off a litany of different other persons with disability, and it's like, you know what, that's great, that's a great point. Being Iowa City, we are obviously very interested in being as inclusive as possible, and making sure that we're providing context in all circumstances. I can tell you, as a police officer for 11 years, I've done field sobriety testing on a person with traumatic brain injury. I would have bet thousands of dollars that the person was intoxicated. They weren't. They had a traumatic brain injury. Until I knew what a traumatic brain injury presented itself as, I would have never thought that. Having that context, having that information at a moment's notice, is something that we're really excited about. Access to Independence is really excited about. We're getting some great feedback. Daisy can give you more information about that. But it's a project that happened very organically, very naturally, and we're gonna see where it leads us. We're still very much in the planning phase, to see how it looks, how it fits, and where it really is gonna go. But thank you for asking about it.
Yes, I can tell you, people within the disability world, that our providers are really excited that you are working with Access to Independence, Sarah, because it makes all the sense of the world to try to figure out how to really, with the police staff, just understand a little more. CIT has really done great, and I think that's just building upon CIT in a different level, so thanks.
I guess when I say that, you know, thank you very much for start reaching out to the community. I just like, start hearing positive reflection, and I saw you guys on the Sudanese, you know, event for the young leader. That was really amazing, because afterward, people was talking about it.
We could've stayed longer.
Yeah, you know, they came late. But all the time, this kind of event go late, but I think that at least, you stayed there, it was, that was very nice of you guys coming out and just engaging with them. You are really starting, as you said, area. People from, like, myself as immigrant and refugees who come to this country, you know, the way that police act in our back-home country is completely different, and we think that's why police tend to, you know, community tend to be far away from the police, they don't want to interact with them. But, you know, starting going out and building those kind of relationship, it really will start to normalize the relationship between the, and improve it between the minority and local enforcement, which is, will be great. And I guess would like to say something that, you know, the young leaders are really now comfortable, and they're saying that they're gonna reach out to you again, so you can come on an event that you can answer question for the young people in the community. But in the same time, I really encourage you to reach out to the association for the, like, the adults people, you know, where, because those people, they have a monthly membership meeting, and if you can just initiate the contact, like, I know that they are not gonna come and say, hey, come over, you know, because they don't know how to do that. But if you can just go and say, oh, we understand that you have a monthly meeting, can we just come and visit you and answer questions? Because, you know, they, at that point, maybe if they have any question, they can ask you unformally, and, you know, this way, they will understand a lot of thing that they don't know if it's legal or not legal, or, you know, or this misconception that they have. But thank you again for, like, engaging with the community.
We'll reach out and get that information for you, so we can...
Sure, we do that, thank you. But the last thing I want to ask you, I remember we used to have, if we stop, like, a person of color or anything, and their headlight is not working, we used to give this voucher. I happen to be in a car, where the police stop one person about this, and they did not offer that. They did not give him a ticket or anything, but they did not offer that, and I was like, hey, I hear that, you have this.
Yes.
And they said, yeah, but maybe we don't have it anymore.
No, we do still have the bulbs program, and that's good feedback. You know, we'll get new officers hired, we get going in different things, so that's a good reminder to get that back out to our patrol division, to get those. But yeah, that's a program we continue. We do still put them out, so I know we're doing it, but that's good feedback to make sure that we're reinforcing that with the officers. They sometimes think, well, I didn't give a ticket, so it was positive.
Yes.
It's that reminder and that continual training we have with them, that there's more to it, and just, it's not just about not giving a ticket, but we still want that, want more out of that interaction. That's what bulbs did, was start the conversation, and how can we help, and, you know, take it just beyond that warning. So that is very good feedback, we appreciate that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for everything you do.
Okay, Luke, wake up.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
All right. Clarification of agenda items. I will put it out there that there are four proclamations today, and if anyone would like to read one, please let me know.
Just on 8A, would this be a good time to talk about that? Just thanking Charlotte for her service, I see she's not here today, but welcoming Ryan to our meeting, and glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I will say that at the end of our meeting, which is item number 19, I'm not sure if you'll be sticking around that long at the end of the formal meeting, maybe you'll be able to address the council and just tell us a little bit about yourself, unless you're prepared to do that now.
I'll wait till then, sure.
If nothing else on the formal agenda, moving on to information packet, February 20th. Moving on to info packet, February 27th.
I did want to note, it's not listed on your pending work session topics, but we do hope to have the Climate Action Commission present at your next council meeting, which is March 24th. So that would be the single work session topic.
That'd be good.
I appreciated the...
I appreciated the IP5, the Strategic Plan Summary Report. Wow, that's packed with information.
I'm reading that between now and next Tuesday. I want it fresh in my mind for a meeting.
And I would say for our strategic plan, that meeting is next Tuesday, the 10th, at 3:00 PM? 1:00 PM? Yes, this is on my calendar. So come with great ideas. One thing I will say about that, I know that this was something you kind of mentioned, if there's, if anybody has like a major, major thing that they want to present, maybe if you can somehow get it to council before so we can process it a little bit, in staff, that might be worth doing. Sometimes it's overwhelming trying to process it in the moment. It could be a lot to it, so just be mindful of, if you have that opportunity to do that. If nothing else from IP, February 27th, we'll start with council updates and we're going to start with Counselor Thomas, it's your turn.
Nothing, nothing to report.
Okay.
I have nothing either, no meetings.
I have nothing either. I have nothing.
This is supposed to be what we've already done, right?
Yes.
So there was an EC-COG meeting last, last week and they also were kind enough to give those of us who are new, an orientation, which even further underscored how much we need to be on there for longer than a year. However, to me, one of the most interesting things that I learned is they, they are managing watershed districts, including Clear Creek. And this watershed management includes helping them clean up their water, help, sort of working with a whole variety of actors who, particularly in the Clear Creek, Corvus also interested. Anyway, it seemed like a really fascinating area of expertise that they have that could be helpful, including for this area as well. A number of us also participated in the employee award ceremony and as well as attending the DVIP Super Bowl.
Today I attended the Partnership for Alcohol.
Oh, I am sorry. That is correct, we go back around here.
Any order you wish, Mayor. So I'm on the board for the UNESCO City of Literature and a couple of weekends ago was their One Book, Two Book Festival, which was just a wonderful, that's kind of their main event, one of, one of the main events of the year. So that, that was all my board service entailed this month. And several of us attended the joint meeting that we had with the School District Board here the day after our last council meeting where we were reviewing the Form Based Code for the South District. So I think there's, good for us to kind of keep, keep that in mind as that code comes before us in a few months. And then I attended my first meeting of the SEETS Advisory or the Paratransit Advisory Committee and just kind of learned a lot and asked some probably really basic questions, learning about the coordination between the different entities for that, that service and what they expect in the future. And the ICAD sponsored the State of the Schools event, I know Counselor Thomas was there and maybe others there, last Thursday morning, which was just a really interesting discussion with representatives from the University of Iowa, Solon School District, Iowa City Community School District, Clear Creek Manor, and Fred Newell was presenting as well. And so it was just a discussion, a conversation about schools and somewhat sort of workforce development and what students and workers of the future need. So that was pretty cool.
I'll just make a quick comment on the One Book, Two Book. I had the opportunity to go to the evening event where the students read their work. My great niece was presenting from one of the schools and let me tell you, the writing of these kids is phenomenal.
Agreed.
It was just amazing, from little short poems that were incredible to some stories that I don't know where they get their imagination, and some of them a little bizarre, but, but just incredibly talented, incredibly talented.
I have to say, I went to that and I was super impressed by all the students and some were very theatrical. And I think we started with first graders. It was amazing. I was super impressed, so kudos to them. Today I went to the Partnership for Alcohol and Safety and there's a lot of things that has happened in there. One of the things that I wanted to just let counselors know is that they do want to, we have it on our work session for the alcohol in the parks discussion, they want to kind of just be aware when that takes place so that they can come and be a part of that As of now, there is nothing more than I'll report about that. There will be next, so our next council meeting, remember it will not be on the third Tuesday, it'll be on the fourth Tuesday, which will be the 24th due to the spring break. So just wanted to remind people about that. Other than that, I have no more updates that I wanted to give. Anything else that we want to discuss before we?
I did want to mention, I didn't have a chance to squeeze it in when we had the historic preservation discussion, but I did attend the, I think it was part of the Black History Month presentation at the library. It was kind of a joint presentation with Stephanie and Jessica representing the effort on the designation of, you know, Tate Arms and the, I'm forgetting the name of the property on Iowa Avenue, but the two properties that were associated with housing for African American students before they had access to, to the residence halls and so forth. And it was a great presentation and I really loved how, and I think this, this was a theme for me anyway with the historic, some of the work of historic preservation this year. This is kind of interweaving of historic, either whether it's historic issues with the log cabins, civil rights with Tate Arms and the Iowa Avenue Project, different ways in which historic preservation is integrating with other concerns we have in Iowa City. And I think that's a very enriching combination. It was a beautifully staged event, I had a great time.
Awesome. Anything else?
Roll call, please.
Bergus?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Salee?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
Well, welcome, everybody, to your city council meeting for tonight. We're very excited that you all are here. We did have a pillar in our community pass away, William F. Supel, and I want to take a few minutes to acknowledge the recent passing of him. Bill was the city attorney for Iowa City from 1961 to 1963, and his entire legal career was devoted to municipal law. Bill was actively involved in the state of Iowa, adopting home rule for cities, and he remained a champion of home rule throughout his life. Additionally, he helped to found the Iowa League of Cities and was its general counsel for 30 years. Bill chaired Iowa City's Charter Review Commission in 2004 and offered his time and guidance to municipal attorneys and elected officials from all over the state of Iowa for 40 years. To the family of Bill, we do wish that this time is going to be very sacred, and we really do appreciate all that he's done. So, thank you, Bill. Moving on to item number two, which is the Student Leadership Awards for Mark Twain Elementary. We're very excited to have two young students with us, and I'm going to invite you up here, and I'm going to come around. All right, I'll stand in between you here. So, we have two leaders from Mark Twain Elementary, and we're very excited that you two are chosen to be the student leaders for today, and I see that you have some people here very interested in your accomplishments. So, why don't we start with you, Joshua, and have you say a few words?
I think I was nominated for this award because when one of my friends has a problem or something, I listen to them. The second reason I show up being a leader is that having good grades make me look good in my future job and at school. A third reason is when someone has gone for their job at school, I try to fill in for them. A fourth reason is because I get my work on time and I'm also trustworthy. Last but not least, my parents always say, "If you do something good, someone will do good to you," and thank you all for having me here.
Great. Thank you so much for those words. Now, we're going to go over to Mohammed Abdullah, and you have some words prepared as well?
Great.
Assalamualaikum. Hi, I'm Mohammed. I think I was nominated for this award because I try my hardest to help my friends and my family and make them happy. My dad is a big influence in my life. He always pushes me to get the best grades and look good and do my best, and I thank him for everything he has done. Another reason I am a leader is that I try to help anybody that needs help, and I will help if you need it. I love school and my friends and my family. I thank you for this award. I appreciate it very much.
Great. Well, we're very proud of both of you, very proud of both of you. So, this award that I'm going to give to you, you'll be able to insert both of your names as I read it. They're very identical, and it says, "Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Mark Twain Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize you, Josh, you, Mohammed, as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you." Presented by the Iowa City City Council today. So, thanks to both of you. Great job. And you have a fan club here, don't you? I'll have your family and your principal, thanks for coming, wave to us. Thank you both. You can have your seats. Thank you. Oh, yes. And I'll give you your certificate.
He was coming back.
Holding on to it.
That gets a little spooky, I think.
Moving on to item number three, and this is Mid-American Energy Company. Energy Rebate Incentives Iowa City Public Works Complex, Phase One.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ron Kentucky Public Works Director, thank you for the opportunity tonight. Tonight, we will be receiving an energy rebate check presented by Mid-American Energy for the Iowa City Public Works Complex Phase One project. It's a combination of two rebates. The first is for LED lighting in the amount of $23,274, and the second is a custom energy incentive strategies rebate for $37,594, for a total incentive amount of $60,868. The Iowa City Public Works Complex Phase One New Construction Program Verification Report, prepared by Mid-American Energy Company's subconsultant, Weldon, indicates the measures taken in energy conservation strategies has a projected energy cost savings of $21,000 per year, and further the simple payback analysis for the incremental costs associated with the more efficient systems anticipated a payback in 9.3 years. Public Works Department would like to thank our project team, including design consultants Newman Munson Architects, HDR, MDG, Seawise Design, and Modus Engineering, and our general contracting team of Merritt Construction and their associated subcontractors, and Mid-American Energy Company, together with their consultant, Weldon. And also would like to thank Brian Gibbs, who's with us here tonight, and he is our Mid-American Energy Company liaison.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come back and present another check. This is the favorite part of my job right here, and we always look forward to these types of projects, and we look forward to doing a lot more with you. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, could you step up here in front, and we'll do the check presentation and get a few photos.
This is exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, proclamation. So, for A is the Special Olympics Month, and this is exciting. So, we're going to... Yes, this is awesome.
Hi, guys.
Hello, hello, welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Hello again.
Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
Come on in.
Hello.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Yes, and I'll stand. I want to read this. I don't know if they can get me on camera. This is a very special, special proclamation today. Yes. Well, thank you all for coming.
Go, Zach, get to the front.
Yes.
Hey, Zach, we need you to turn around, bud.
And I'm going to read a proclamation. I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas Special Olympians have a strong desire to compete and win. Whereas Special Olympians know that bravery is measured in setting goals and attempting to reach them. And whereas Special Olympians recognize the joy, pride, and self-worth, humility, and disappointment inherent in organized competition. And whereas Special Olympians appreciate the benefits that healthy competition and physical activity can bring. And whereas Special Olympians give the entire community a chance to gather and share in their spirit of accomplishment. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby declare the month of March 2020 to be Special Olympics Month, and the city of Iowa City, and urge all citizens to commend and support the activities of the Special Olympics. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Joyce Rossi that's going to talk to us.
Okay, Sergeant.
Sergeant Yuna Shriver founded Special Olympics in 1968 with less than 100 athletes. Their first competition was in Chicago. Special Olympics Iowa has served Iowans with special intellectual disabilities for the last 42 years. And in 2019, Iowa Special Olympics provided training, competition, and 22 sports to over 16,000 athletes and unified sports partners across Iowa's 99 counties. This year, we really appreciate your March Special Olympics Month because our midwinter tournament is, our banquet is March 13th. We'll have a full day of competition on the 14th. We have basketball, basketball skills, cheerleading, gymnastics, and powerlifting. Once our athletes arrive in Iowa City, they have no expenses. Through our fundraising efforts, which is a polar plunge on April 25th, I offer this every year and no one ever takes me up on it, but you're more than welcome to join us out at the reservoir. Another one of our fundraising events is our Swing With Celebrities Golf Tournament. This year, it is June 26th. The Iowa City Council gives our Special Olympic athletes the recognition that they so deserve by making March Special Olympics Month. Here to accept the proclamation is Zach Snapp, Jill Michalek, Mallory Ernst, Justin Conklin, Chad Sissel, Leah Rieslinger, Blake Whips, Tyler Kurtz, Nate Kleese, Michelle Snyder, and Don Gorvan. One other thing is you have always been so awesome to us that Special Olympics Iowa would like to present the Iowa City Council with a plat of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jesus the Lord, God, amen. Jesus the Lord, God, amen.
Very good.
God, the toys, the toys, games, uh, seated chair, and the jungle book. That is a mark of Jordan.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
March 13th is the banquet?
Well, that was awesome and amazing. Yes. You as well, thank you. Congratulations. We really appreciate the gift. Very nice.
Very nice.
Yes. Item number 4B, Bruce Awney Day. Whereas Bruce Awney has spent the past 34 years earning the trust and loyalty of Eastern Iowa television viewers as the evening news anchor at KCRG TV9 in Cedar Rapids. And whereas Bruce Awney has delivered breaking news, good news, and heart-wrenching news with the compassion and professionalism of the highest journalistic standards. And whereas Bruce Awney's unwavering commitment to his craft has helped shape countless journalists who have worked with Bruce in the newsroom. And whereas Bruce Awney has traveled the world and seen the mightiest to the weakest of humanity, while always demonstrating the ability to tell the story with accuracy, fairness, and empathy. And whereas the Iowa Broadcast News Association honored Bruce Awney with this highest individual award, the prestigious Jack Shelley Award. And whereas Bruce Awney has been a true treasure to Eastern Iowans who have graciously welcomed him into their living rooms to deliver the news. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim March 3rd, 2020 to be Bruce Awney Day. And urge all citizens to take part in recognizing and honoring the many contributions that Bruce Awney has made to our community and wish him the best on his retirement. Bruce Awney.
I'll just say a few words that Iowa City has always been a very, very important part of our viewing area here in Eastern Iowa. Extremely important community. And we have had wonderful relations with the city, with the people here, and we hope that continues for many, many more years. We hope that we're doing an adequate job for you as well. So if we're not, let us know. But thank you very much. This is very humbling and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 4C, International Women's Day.
Whereas in 1911, International Women's Day was first honored in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland, when more than 1 million women and men attended rallies campaigning for women's rights to work, vote, be trained, and hold public office, as well as an end to gender discrimination. And whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace. And whereas, following the United Nations' lead, each year, the U.S. President issues a proclamation calling for observance of March as National Women's History Month and issues a separate proclamation on International Women's Day, March 8th. And whereas, the gender wage gap persists for women who hold full-time year-round jobs in the United States regardless of industry and education, and this gender wage gap is significantly greater for women of color. And whereas, in the United States, mothers are breadwinners in half of families with children under 18, yet mothers with full-time year-round jobs are paid an average of 71 cents for every dollar paid to fathers, and this wage gap is significantly greater for women of color. And whereas, women continue to be underrepresented in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics fields. And whereas, International Women's Day is an opportunity to recognize, reflect on, and celebrate the progress made to advance women's equality. And whereas, International Women's Day is also an opportunity to recommit to the cause of equality and expanded opportunities for women. Now therefore, I Councilwoman Janice Weiner, on behalf of Mayor Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2020 to be International Women's Day. And we have Bijou Malibu from the Human Rights Commission here to accept this.
All right. Moving on to item 4D, Census Day.
Whereas, every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a count of the population and provide a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. And whereas, census data determines seats in the United States House of Representatives, as well as redistricting of state legislature, county, and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas, census data is vital to our community because the Iowa Legislative Services Agency says over $13.7 billion in federal funding annually goes to Iowa hospitals, fire departments, schools, and roads through the funding of 316 federal programs from which Iowacitians may benefit. And whereas, an accurate count of people living in Iowa City exponentially creates value, secures direct financial and community benefits for our residents over the next 10 years, and is critical to planning for future growth, development, and social needs of Iowa City. And whereas, census information, is used only for statistical purposes, remains confidential and securely encrypted for decades, and federal law prohibits any public or private agency from gaining access to any individual's personal data, including local landlords, law enforcement, DHS, the FBI, CIA, or ICE. And whereas, our local service organizations, schools, and businesses are supportive of the efforts and outcomes of the census, and have been partnering with the Iowa City Area Regional Census Complete Count Committee of volunteers to educate, encourage, and enable greater success and census participation by all community members. And whereas, for the first time ever, residents will be able to respond to the census online and by telephone in a variety of language and accessibility needs, in addition to traditional response by paper mailing. And whereas, the United States Census Bureau will be mailing information residents need to participate in the census beginning the week of March 12th, 2020. And whereas, all persons living in the household on April 1st, 2020, including adults, students, and young children, should be counted in the census regardless of nationality or living situation, where they are from, what language they speak, or their citizenship status. Now therefore, I Pauline Taylor, on behalf of Mayor Bruce Teague, do hereby declare that Iowa City will observe April 1st, 2020 as Census Day and encourage all residents to respond, stand, and be counted with the confidence that their information will be securely protected and that they are helping build the future of their community. Accepting is Ashley Monroe, and I'd like to first thank her for everything you've done to ensure that we have a successful census count.
While the census proclamation, thank you for reading that. It's quite wordy and it says it all. But I will just add that it's incredibly important for our community to participate, all members of the community, from young children to adults in every living circumstance possible. We have a group of very committed community organizations that are working hard at encouraging and ensuring that people are able to respond to the Census Bureau. So you will continue to see notices and information coming out about the census. As the proclamation stated, there will be mailers going out the week of March 12th. They will continue through, generally through the middle of April before you start seeing people come around to the neighborhoods. They still need people to take the census or be census takers, so you can apply to the Census Bureau for jobs still at this point. If you want more information, just go to either 2020census.gov or you can go to the Iowa City website at icgov.org/census. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, for all you're doing. All right. So, we're on items five through 10, the consent calendar. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Aye.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Motion passes seven to zero. And moving on to item 11, which is Community Comment. And this is a time where the community can come up and share anything that they would like to, that is not on our formal agenda. We do have stickers in the back of the room that you can place on the sign-in sheet. When you do come to address council, please state your name and sign in on the sheet and please keep your comments between three to five minutes. Welcome.
Hello, Allison James. I'm going to bring the mood down a bit, sorry about that. I'm here today to voice more ongoing concerns about the killing of mass quantities of the deer population taking place in this town currently. I'm very happy to see that Mayor Teague is at the helm and I envision great things ahead for our city. I was particularly moved by his State of the City speech delivered at the February 18th meeting. All the topics addressed are of critical importance and I feel proud to be part of a city that highlights these issues instead of turning a blind eye. I did resonate specifically with the section on parks and recreation and wish to point out that most people value parks and open spaces for their connection to nature that they can obtain while there. And this includes the various wildlife and the deer populations that roam that space. Therefore, I see the wholesale shooting of deer for profit as incompatible with the commitment to the city's parks. Since December 3rd, I've counted 10 letters entered into official council correspondence that raise concerns about or ask to stop the sharpshooting and/or plans for a bow hunt. Except for Don Frery, whom I know, I don't know any of these people who are writing to you and they are not in any way affiliated with the Iowa City Dear Friends Advocacy Group. Instead, they are citizens hearing about this in the media or from city announcements and feeling that it is imperative they speak out. One individual claimed she heard rumors that shooting would take place in the land next to her house, but the city could not verify this nor would adjacent landowners be notified of any shooting activities. When I looked up this address, I saw that the property in question is about two blocks from my house and about two blocks from 50 other single-family homes. The area includes a large wooded area around Rolston Creek where neighborhood children play. In fact, one of our neighbor's children ran away during the summer for a few hours, as you do when you're 10 years old, and was in fact in this plot of land during the time when he had run away. There are no signs and apparently no way for even immediate neighbors to know when and where men with guns will show up. It's absolutely appalling. Another bait site where presumably shooting is taking place right now was recently found by someone who communicated to me that it was within 50 to 60 feet of the new extension of Foster Road that contains both a sidewalk and a bike path that are frequently used. There are no private property or no trespassing signs in this area, and until this road was recently built, it was a wooded area seen to be an extension of Simmick Open Space. There was not then and is no way now to tell where the Simmick Land ends and this private property begins. There are no signs indicating that guns are pointed at that spot. When asking the city which private properties were being used to bait and shoot, the Dear Friends Group was told that these were unused spaces where no people are expected to be. I can tell you that is flat out wrong and I can't believe there hasn't been a close call yet. I still can't quite wrap my head around how this all got initiated. There wasn't an increase in deer-related traffic accidents, there was no request from the Parks Department to shoot the deer. And actually, if you go back and look, it all started with a petition from one wealthy neighborhood. And I just have to think, man, they've got some friends on this council. Even after 400 less influential citizens signed a petition to leave the deer alone, this whole plan was carried out. I appreciate Councilmember Taylor bringing up community concerns at the January 21st meeting, but was dismayed to see Councilmember Mims completely shut down the conversation, claiming that the concerns were based on misinformation. So shame on you for not taking the very real concerns of the community seriously. And shame on you for inviting these hired guns into our community. The last thing I want to say tonight is that this is just a small selection of the animosity and safety issues that will come up during an amateur open bow hunting season. These sharpshooters are supposed to be professionals, yet they've caused strife in this town. Imagine what happens when people who don't even live here are allowed to come in, walk around with weapons in public, shooting at things that move in the woods. I urge you to reconsider the decision to allow an open bow hunt in Iowa City this fall. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? Please come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Get to my notes here. My name is...
Yep, will you please sign in as well?
I did.
Oh, thank you. I didn't notice that.
I'm first.
Great.
My name is Linda Vogel. I am new to the community. I just moved here from the Lake of the Ozarks about six months ago and have had the opportunity to become the newest commissioner at the senior center, or the center as I prefer to think of it. We're, you know, not seniors as far as I'm concerned. And when I was at Lake of the Ozarks, I also worked with the community in the senior center area. I must say, moving up here is exciting. This is just everything we would have ever dreamed of when we were at the lake. With that, I wanted to say things about a couple of the projects that we've had going on. I do know, and I'm still learning these things, that the RFP is coming up. With that, I wanted to say things about a couple of the projects that we've had going on. I do know, and I'm still learning these things, that the RFP is coming up shortly, which will help us a lot with the master plan that we're working on as the commission. The commission group that we have, which Ashley's met, very high energy, really open to a lot of ideas, thinking outside of the box. All of you up there, plus everyone here, really, someday you're going to age, whether you think you are or not. We're putting things in place that are going to be beyond exciting for everybody. With that, we had sent a survey out for, we sent 5,000 surveys out. My background is marketing, so I'm always happy if I sent 5,000 out and I got 500 back. We've gotten well over 1,000, and that was as of, I believe, yesterday. I have not seen them, but the ones that are looking at it saying they're giving us a lot of answers on what they'd really like to see in the community as it grows, it's one other thing that's very exciting with it. The other thing is, we just completed Black History Month, and we all feel like it was a big success. I think last year, they just had a handful of people show up, but at one of the things, they had well over 100 to 110 people show up for the event. So moving forward, I'm sure various commissioners are going to come and talk to you and give you updates. Obviously, if any of you have not done the survey, it's too late, but you can always come and talk to any of us at the commission on any ideas that you've got. So we're looking forward to it. So that was it. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you for sharing. Would anyone else like to address council? All right. Item number 12, planning its own matters. 12A, zoning co-text amendment related to animal-related commercial uses. Ordinances to amend Title 14 zoning related to the animal-related commercial uses. This is second consideration. And staff also requests for expedited action.
I move the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Taylor. Seeing there is none, roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims. Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Move final adoption at this time.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims. Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Mims. Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13, Prentice Street Bridge Replacement. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Prentice Street Bridge Replacement Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notices to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipts of bids. This is going to be an open, I'm going to open the public hearing. And hello, we will have a little presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here previously in December. My name's Melissa Klow. I'm with Engineering Division. Quick reminder, for Prentice Street, we are looking at reconstruction of the bridge at Lynn and Prentice with a triple reinforced concrete box culvert. We will be replacing the pavement on Prentice Street from south Dubuque Street to just east of Ralston Creek. We'll increase capacity of the storm sewer to reduce surcharging during large rain events. And the sidewalk and ADA access improvements will also occur at these intersections. As I stated, I was here at the beginning of December. We had previously approved Prentice Street during plan review prior to bidding. It is determined there are a number of revisions required per the Iowa City approved supplemental specifications. These changes include pavement and sidewalk thickness. ADA ramps were checked, some were adjusted for locations. We addressed utility conflicts, provided some updated details in the most recent supplemental Engineering staff looked at the bridge deck paving and drainage details. We coordinated some fencing and bridge barrier location and type, and also reviewed access for future maintenance issues within the creek, within Ralston Creek. Other than that, the typical section that was previously shown has not changed. We're still looking at 31-foot overall pavement width with 10-foot travel lanes and street parking available for eastbound traffic. Our estimated project costs are at about 1.7 million. The schedule, the revised bid letting date is April 21st of 2020, with construction beginning May 26th to wrap up by November of 2020. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you. All right. Public discussion. Would anyone like to address this topic? I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Item number 14, water distribution east pressure zone. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the water distribution east pressure zone project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notices to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. Hello.
Good evening. I'm John Durst. I'm your Assistant Superintendent of the Water Division. I'm going to speak to you tonight about our water pressure zoning improvement project. Specifically, the purpose of this project is to increase the level of service to our customers on the east side of town by increasing their available pressures. That'll help our existing customers and future development. So I'll briefly go over the project and ask if there's any questions. So our system is 270 miles of water distribution main. The line weights shown on this map show the relative size of those mains. We have four ground storage reservoirs and one water plant. We're a completely pump system, as you all are probably aware. We have no water towers, so our pumps provide the pressure to the residents of the city. As the pressures change, or the elevations of each home changes, the available energy in that water also changes. So currently, our system is set up with a single pressure zone. That single pressure zone is represented by that center bar. The boxes surrounding it are actual GSRs. This graph is shown based on elevations. As you can see on the sidebar, it goes from about 690 all the way up to 910 feet of elevation. In water, we like to reduce things down to feet to represent the available energy. With a single pressure zone, we tend to have areas that have high pressure and areas that have low pressure. As one would expect, the lower areas in the city have higher pressures, just because there's more available energy, because we don't have to push it uphill as far. But there are areas in the city, nope, I go back, oh, no, I'm right on it, that have lower pressure. And as you can see, most of those low-pressure areas represented by the purple dots are out to the east side of town. Therefore, when we looked at the solutions available to us to provide better pressure to those areas, it makes the most sense not to try to increase the level of that entire bar, but to break off a portion of it and then elevate that pressure. Increasing pressure over the entire system can have drastic impacts to customers that then need to reduce that pressure before it can enter their buildings, or it can further damage water main that isn't used to being at that pressure. So our solution is to affect projects that essentially isolate the east side of the water distribution system to be serviced by our Rochester GSR to then increase the pressure on that side of the city. In order to do that, we have to do some projects in order to separate the system, but still allow some interconnection should we have any emergency events, which would be a loss of power, a main break, or a lost power main break, and a fire situation. Sorry. So this is what the hydraulic grade lines look like after we break the two zones. You can see there's one purple box off to the side that is a Rochester GSR, and we have an east pressure zone that is above what the central pressure zone is currently at. The other areas would continue to be in the central pressure zone, and you can see there's some interconnections with those lines that move back and forth. Those are check valves and pressure-reducing valves that'll allow the two zones to transmit water between them should it be needed in any of those emergency situations. The initial projects that we will be doing are geographically dispersed, as one would expect, in order to break the zones into two separate areas. A lot of them will be focused on First Avenue. There'll be a few up in, around Dubuque Street on Ridge Road in Virginia, at Kimball Dodge, and down on Muscatine. The areas in the zone itself weren't chosen arbitrarily. The size was basically based on what Rochester GSR could service into the future. With that, our timeline here in 2020 is to establish these boundary locations. Our work will occur between April and August. The cost of this project is about 240,000. In 2021, we'll create our pressure-reducing valve stations. That's those two areas where you saw the check valves and pressure-reducing valves. Those will be part of other projects, specifically the Rochester reconstruction and the American Legion at Scott Boulevard work. In the future, as our system continues to grow, we'll likely need to do improvements to the Rochester GSR to make sure they can continue to service that area. And there will be other projects, as always, with the system as it continues to grow. That, ma'am, is there any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve resolution?
Move.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Weiner. Council discussion.
Moved by me, yeah.
Oh, Sully.
Yes.
Seconded by Weiner. All right, thank you. I said it in my head. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item number 14, new. Item number 15, Scott Napoleons Fair Meadows Park Improvements. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Scott Napoleons and Fair Meadows Park Improvements Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. Hello.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Zachary Hall, Superintendent of Parks. I'm filling in for our directors, Julie Seidel Johnson. And tonight, I will be going over the Napoleon Scott Park Fair Meadows and Weatherby Park Rehabilitation projects. So first off, just to give you a point of reference, and I won't laser point too much, Scott Park in the upper northeast portion of the city, and then Fair Meadows, Napoleon, and Weatherby in the southern portion of the city. Scott Park is our first one that we'll go over. We have an existing playground, which we'll see in the next slide, but as you can see, hopefully, is the existing playground here closer to some of the homes. And so one of the items of the project per our Parks Master Plan was to get some ADA access and some accessibility to that. We currently don't have any kind of sidewalks or accessibility to the playground, so it's kind of out there on its own, as you can see here in our existing conditions. Also, we have a shelter on the opposite side of the road, and so part of the project will be removing the playground, removing the shelter, and then moving the playground a little bit to the south, as seen here on the plans, and then making a connection and adding a connection to a new shelter. It might be easiest to go through any questions one by one since we do have four of these projects out there, so I guess I'll ask if there's any questions in particular to Scott Park.
I think Scott had some floodplain issues as well, does it not?
We do.
Which we're out of, but-
We do, we do have some wet conditions in Scott Park, and that's, it's typically localized to the south, southeast of where the current playground is, on the other side of the drive. So where you can see the existing trees is typically where we have most of the moisture buildup that we get. Thankfully, the playground that is existing, we haven't seen any issues as far as moisture, but we are pulling it away from the boundaries next to the homes and keeping it out of that wet area.
Just real quick, Scott Park is actually a stormwater detention facility first and kind of a park second, so you do see it fill up particularly around the dog park between the road and the dog park area, and that's by design.
I'll just add one note that's not on the slide. To the left of the playground, basically along the hillside, we will be establishing, in a separate project, establishing prairie along that hillside. So that's one feature that's not discussed in here, but is an item that will be coming. And this is just a rendering of what the playground will be like. We did a public input session last year at Rita's Ranch. Dog Park is part of the party in the park, and got some really good response from the Moving on, Napoleon Softball Complex. This is an interesting one. We have, we have an existing playground that's outside of the outfield next to one of the existing shelters, about right here, and we've had some wet conditions. We've had some drainage issues there the last couple of years. We've had to close down the playground due to drainage issues. And so we worked with our consultants to look at what we could do as far as a little bit of a different design. So this is the existing playground, and this has been closed on and off for the last couple of years because of drainage issues. We do have drainage tile that was put in there in the original design. We believe that that's been compromised, and so we're looking to pull it out of that condition, or that existing location, move it closer to the concession area, and provide a little bit different experience and kind of localize the activities, especially during tournaments and big play. And so what you see here, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but this is the concession area, footprint of it. We have a trail, the one part of the trail system coming through here, another part of the trail system coming through here, so we're making this connection from both trail sections through the concession, through some of the playground nodes. And this will be, like I said, somewhat of a different experience, so we'll have a couple different sections. It won't be a traditional standalone unit, so we'll have different components. And we are looking at adding in some shade structure if the budget allows. So I guess at this time, I'll take any questions on the Napoleon.
Could you show the site plan again?
Sure.
So are there trees around there that would help with that shade?
We have some trees. What you cannot see from the image, and I apologize, it's kind of washing out. We do have an outfield fence for the ball field that is fairly, in fairly close proximity as far as allowing for any kind of tree planting in between that fence and the playground. We do have tree coverage over along the trail system here. And again, we have another outfield fence in this area, so it's a little bit tricky
So yeah, a shade structure on the, or a shade element on the structure itself is the way to go.
No other questions? All right. And Fair Meadows Park, this is an exciting one. We've had a lot of upgrades to this park recently over the years, and as you know, it's a very popular splash pad. My kids love this splash pad. We have a new shelter, or excuse me, a new restroom that was put in in 2014, 2015, and the pump house associated with the splash pad. The existing playground is over here off of Miami, so once we did the upgrades here, one thing that we definitely heard from the neighborhood and users is that there's a wall or a barrier, and you know, parents who have their kids over with the splash pad can't see their kids playing over at the playground. And this is one of our older playgrounds. We still have sand as one of the surfacing materials in a portion of this playground. And so what we are proposing, what the project is going to do, is move the playground over to this area, demolish the existing shelter, and then add a new shelter connecting with the existing pathways. And so these are the existing conditions as far as the shelter and the playground. And again, this gets pretty washed out, but this is the splash pad. This is the new shelter. We have connections coming off of Miami, coming through and making a connection up to the existing parking lot. And so full connectivity between the parking lot, the playground, the splash pad, the shelter, and then back again on over to Miami. And this playground, we coordinated with the school district to better understand what playgrounds they are putting in at Grant Wood and what they've done with their upgrades as far as their playgrounds. So knowing that the splash pad is a popular site, especially for some of the younger children, we went with kind of a younger age playground design. And project timeline for all three of these projects, public hearing tonight, bid letting April, award mid-April, and then construction late April, and a final completion late October.
Yeah, again, just general comment, and I was looking at the screen here that we have, and it's a little bit, the idea of planting trees around these gathering spaces, and it looked like there might be some gaps in that canopy cover. Not that one, but the next one.
Yeah, we actually...
Yeah, to the, I guess it would be to the west, perhaps.
As part of our Arbor Day tree planting program, we will be coordinating with Grant Wood School. We are going to wait until next year, once this project is complete, so we better understand what the site conditions are going to be like. We fully expect to be planting trees around this neighborhood, and we're really fortunate that the existing tree canopy coverage, especially to the southwest, which is really what we want, is really ideal for the location of that playground. Also note, with the removal of the existing playground, we're also looking at some type of tree planting in that corner off of Miami.
So during the construction, would the old playground still be there, or would it be demolished?
The old playground will, that's a great question. So with Scott Park and Fair Meadows, both those playgrounds will stay in place until the construction is over, and then actually, our staff will remove those. Napoleon Park, the playground already has been removed because we've had such wet conditions, we wanted to get that out of there.
And I know on the first one, you, you know, brought the park a little closer for ADA. Can you speak a little bit about the equipment and how it...
Sure. That's a great question. I'm going to go back to, actually, if you don't mind, if I hold off until our Weatherby playground, that kind of gives a more comprehensive viewing, has a number of different components that I can talk to that. Any other questions regarding those projects?
Thank you. All right. You'll be back up in a little bit. All right. Public discussion on this item. Seeing there's no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 16, Weatherby Park Improvements. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Weatherby Park Improvements Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. Back so-so.
Thank you, Zachary Hall, Superintendent of Parks. So the Weatherby Park project, again, is another shelter, restroom, playground redesign, really a full park redesign of the amenities in this park. And Weatherby is really special. We've had a lot of programming, as you know. Two years ago, we had the sport court that was installed. We have the Edible Forests. We have the community gardens, trail system. We've expanded some prairie down in the southern portion of it, so just a lot of going on in this park, and we have the disc golf course that's there as well, so. But this is one of our older playgrounds, very well-used playground, and one of our older shelter styles that is the attached kind of theme, so the restroom is attached to the shelter. So one of the things we wanted to look at and move towards per our Parks Master Plan is separating those shelters and restrooms, so folks can have, you know, different experiences if someone's at the shelter. It doesn't feel awkward that you're in a restroom area, things like that, so you'll see that on the site plan here. And I apologize again, it's very washed out, but this park as well has a greatly used splash pad in this area, and so the existing playground is located in this area, and we are essentially moving that kind of up the hill. The restroom will stay in its general location that it is now, and then the shelter will basically move to the north, down the hill to where the existing playground is. And so we'll have a connection coming off the pathway, up to the shelter, again, up to the restroom, and then circular connection all the way around the playground. And we have kind of two components here. We have a main playground-featured area, and then we have a swings area, and then benches around, and then a connection up to the splash pad. And so as I alluded to with the last projects, this playground has a lot of great features. And mayor, to speak to your question, as far as ADA components or components for folks with different needs, this playground has a number of great features. One thing that we look at is, can we give users a different experience? We've definitely heard at our conferences and our playground trainings, we have a certified playground safety training that's occurring right now at Robert A. Lee this week, and one of the things that we look at is different experience for different users. So spinning items is one that is definitely high on the list for folks with different needs, climbing, balancing, and so this playground, if you've been to Longfellow, Mayan, and then a number of our newer playgrounds around, this has components from all of those different playgrounds. So definitely something that users will be, that they can identify with, or children can identify with, but giving some different experiences as well. We have some musical components with it as well, so. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Yes, thank you.
Yep. And as far as project timeline, again, public hearing tonight, bid letting April 1, award date April 7, construction April 20, and final completion late October.
Great. Any questions?
Will the splash pad be closed then during the construction?
No, the splash pad will not. That's a great question.
It's very popular.
Yes, it is. The splash pad will not be closed. That is on a separate water service, and so that will not be closed.
Thank you.
Great.
Is there a drinking fountain?
Yes, the drinking fountain, that's a great question. I'll have to double-check on the project manual, but I believe it's up at the restroom.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing there is none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Thomas.
Second.
Seconded by Weiner. Discussion?
I'm really happy to see the change with the shelter facility, which not only replacing the one that was there, but moving it up the slope. I think it will have a better position within the park. One of the things I'm really fond of at Weatherby is the openness of that open field, and this will, I think, have a stronger relationship to, the playground will have a stronger relationship to that open area than it does now. And then, as Zach was saying, there's a kind of a nice, rich palette of play features here that I think will draw a nice, diverse crowd.
Yes, I like the separation of the shelter and the bathrooms as well. You can see from each vantage point under the shelter at that point. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 17, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicant must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill at unexpired term effective June 1, 2020, to December 31, 2020. Applicants must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 14, 2020. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Mims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 18, Announcement of Vacancies Previous. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 31, 2020. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 17, 2020. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. These vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 19. So who's going to take a stab at it, Austin or Ryan? You'll go first, huh?
All right. Hello there, Austin Wu, UIG City Council Liaison. So first, I'll just start, kick off with one event of note this weekend. Knock de Rojo 2020 will take place this Saturday, the 7th of March, from 6 to 9:00 PM at Hansher. Per the Facebook event page, it's Iowa's Bollywood Fusion Dance Competition, 18 years running, free for UI students, 10 for UI faculty and staff, $5 for children, 5 and under, $14 general admission, and $16 at the door. And then the second thing I have is, welcome, Ryan. That's the first city council meeting tonight. So come up here, say a few words, say hello, introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name's Ryan Longenecker. I am a first-year student at the University of Iowa, and then I'm the new deputy city liaison. Thank you for having me tonight and for accepting me. I am a political science and economics major, minoring in Arabic on the pre-law track, and I have a love for politics and government, and having served as a student liaison to my school board back in Bettendorf, this has reminded me a lot of that, just on a much bigger scale, so I'm really excited to be back and involved with local government and excited to see how I can be of use between students and local government, and I'm excited to get to know all of you, so thank you.
Great.
Welcome.
Yes, well, welcome.
And with that, Ryan, welcome to City Channel 4 Public Record.
Great, 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 great. All right, item number 20, City Council Information Updates, and we're going to start with Counselor Thomas.
So this is looking forward. Can't even read my own writing here. Well, we will be having our strategic plan discussion this coming Tuesday. Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Okay, so if anyone's interested in that conversation, I think it's an important one that we have on council, so we'd encourage those interested in strategic planning matters to consider that.
But it is at the East Side Recycling, right? It's not here.
Yeah, East Side Recycling.
Don't show up here.
Don't show up here. And I think that's it.
1:00.
1:00. 1:00 to 5:00 PM is the timeframe we're looking at. That's it.
Not a lot we've got there. I will just mention, and I'm not sure if any of our counselors would have known, but we just recently lost one of our former police officers, Stephen Fortman, who I think had been with the department 30 years maybe, had moved back to Missouri and passed away just recently. So there will be, for people maybe who knew Steve while he was in this community, there will be a visitation on Monday, the 9th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM out at the Iowa City Church out on American Legion Road, and a celebration of life from 7:00 to 8:00 PM next Monday.
I really don't have anything, but I guess this Saturday, we're going to have the pancake service for the crisis center at Lutheran Church. I just invite everybody to come and eat breakfast.
I think I'd be remiss if, I'm going to start on somewhat somber notes and comments. The mayor spoke about Bill Supo, but just wanted to say that I was wearing the Home Rule button in honor of him and his role in doing that. I told his family at the visitation that until I was on city council, I really didn't understand the importance of what he had accomplished with that, and of course, what is slowly being taken away from us, but it is important, and so this is in honor of him. And then also, just our thoughts are with the folks in Nashville, Tennessee, and the devastation of the tornado that went through there. Back to other items, Laura had mentioned the joint meeting with the school district, and I thought it was a very good presentation by Opticos. The southeastern side of Iowa City has great potential, and I hope that developers can be inspired to follow some of the suggestions that they'd made, and I look forward to watching this area develop. It's a lot of promise in that area. That was last Wednesday, Thursday, the mayor and I had a listing post at the Senior Center. Participants came very well-prepared to discuss things that were, a lot of it related to the Senior Center, with a lot of topics of concern relating to that. I believe that the mayor will be writing up a summary of that, and it'll be included in one of our next packets, so look forward to seeing that. Friday, of course, somebody also mentioned the City Awards Luncheon. It's always a nice event, and always impressed to see the many years of tenure of our city staff, and we have, truly have a lot of dedicated staff, and their services is really appreciated by us. As you here mentioned, the Community Crisis Center Potluck, I'm sorry, Pancake Breakfast this Saturday from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Our Redeemer Lutheran Church. It's always a great event, and usually, if you're a Hawkeye football fan, they're usually, the players are there as a community service event, so it's always fun to see them, too. This Sunday, March 8, don't forget that it is spring forward, daylight saving time, turn your clocks forward. That's about all I have.
So there is, we have, those of us who are new have MPO orientation tomorrow at 6:00, so that we can learn about yet another portion of this city and area, and I'll be participating in a couple, one with Bruce, one with I don't know whom, of readings for Iowa City Community School District Book Madness over the next couple of weeks, and maybe I'll learn...
next couple of weeks, and maybe I'll learn to read by then.
All right.
I'll just put in my monthly plug for the South District Neighborhood Association, which is happening tomorrow, Wednesday, March fourth, from six to seven thirty PM at the Broadway Neighborhood Center, and this month's meeting is an open discussion, just collecting feedback and input and networking, meeting your neighbors and individuals who live or work or want to know more about the South District. And then on Thursday evening, and is, is an event at the Chauncey called Lunafest. It's the Girls on the Run of Eastern Iowa Annual Fundraiser, and it's a, um, they show a number of films, really focusing on empowerment for women and girls. So that is a ticketed event, but it's a fundraiser for the Girls on the Run of Eastern Iowa, and everything else, I think, has already been mentioned, so.
All right, there is one thing people didn't mention, and, and that is on last Friday, last Friday, the annual award celebration for the city staff.
Yes.
Oh, Paula, okay, so I, I...
That's okay.
I listened.
You can mention it again.
I was paying attention. Maybe that's when I was making my notes.
I thought you were gonna say the Soul Food Dinner.
The Soul Food Dinner. I forgot about the Soul Food Dinner.
Yeah, but, but that is another one. The Soul Food Dinner and just, which was the, you know, really celebrating Black History and just having so many various people from all walks of life to be a part of that. It was a great event. And there were lots of events for Black History Month, and I guess what I will say is that Black History Month and the, and the accomplishments of Black individuals within our community, local and even historically, I think, let's not just make it a month, but let's keep it going. And so with that, I will...
I had one thing. Sorry, I had one thing.
Absolutely.
I, just, on the, March eleventh is the Night of a Thousand Dinners, which is always a great event as well, at the Rec Center, starting at five.
Great, 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 thank you. And then on Friday, Mayor Protem Mazza here, Sully and I, along with city manager, Assistant City Manager Ashley Monroe, we attended here in City Hall a conference, just a meeting with Kosovo leaders. It was great. They were just coming to talk to us about potentially being a sister city. They reached out to us, and we gladly accepted the invitation just to talk to them, and there was a lot, a lot of things that we learned about their community, as far as like, some of the things that they're dealing with, they've only been eleven years, I believe. Twelve years, yeah, independent country, and so some of the things that they're accomplishing, like, I feel like we have, um, been through the waters and found solutions for, and so it was, it was great interaction. They left us with this wonderful plaque. It's really beautiful. I, I would really encourage you to take some time to look at it. It's kind of a city on a hill and lots of things, so great conversations. I know that they are real interested in creating more partnerships with people in the US and never know what might happen here, but that is definitely something council will bring up.
Yeah, they're, they're only, the only consulate that we have in Iowa is the, is the Kos- is the consulate of Kosovo in Des Moines, and that, it started because of a relationship with the Iowa National Guard.
Great.
And they invite all of you to visit their country on July, because I guess Governor is also going there, or something like that.
Yes, yes, yes. All right. And we're gonna go over to our city manager. Any updates?
Nothing tonight.
All right.
No.
All right, thanks again for the census.
Very welcome.
Yes. All right, nothing, nothing, nothing. So if nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Breaking the record.
Yes.
First time for this year. Yeah. I guess Laura and...